Good afternoon, welcome to the Laredo Independent School District Board of Trustees regular board meeting. It's Tuesday, January the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at five-thirty PM at the Amber Year Boardroom. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hector J. Garcia.
I'm present.
Mr. Hector J. Noyola.
Present.
Ms. Monica Garcia, I'm present. Dr. Minita Ramirez.
She's going to be absent.
Mr. Guadalupe Gomez.
Present.
Mr. Ricardo Garza is running late. We have a call.
Good evening, honorable board members and Superintendent Dr. Rios. Today is Tuesday, June the fourteenth, and our nation is observing Flag Day. Therefore, it's most appropriate for the LISD Board of Trustees to recognize Mr. Rodolfo Aguilar, who is an active member of the Laredo Veterans Honor Guard. The group will be presenting the flag for us shortly. Mr. Aguilar is a U.S. Army Vietnam Combat Veteran who graduated from Martin High School in nineteen fifty-three. Here's a video of Mr. Aguilar produced by ITV. Lights, please.
What happened? It didn't get cooler. We had a power outage about an hour before you all got here, so everything's coming back on.
Today, Laredo ISD has the honor of recognizing a Laredo-born veteran, Rodolfo Popo Aguilar. Tell us about your years of service.
I served in the U.S. Army from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-seven. The rank that I made the most was E-4, Speculative Corps, when I was drafted. There was no choice.
Tell us about your experience being drafted during the Vietnam War.
I was nineteen when I was drafted. I had graduated from Martin High in nineteen sixty-three, and in sixty-five, I was drafted. And that was an obligatory service that you had to go, you know. At that time, since there was a war, almost everybody was sent over there. So, a lot of our friends from Martin High went and died over there. A old friend of mine, we grew up in the same neighborhood, in the Colonia Guadalupe, and Rudy Gonzalez, Rodolfo Gonzalez, he was killed in Vietnam. Then there was Raúl Villa, he lived about a block and a half from my house. I think he got out of high school in the twelfth grade, but he was drafted too. He got killed. One of my cousins, Renundo Torres, he was a junior at that time. When he graduated, he was drafted. He was also killed in Vietnam.
Share with us your experience living as a veteran in Laredo.
Well, you know, here in Laredo, it's a very patriotic city. Almost everybody who sees you are a veteran, and they say, "Thank you for your service." Even the little kids, you know. And keep doing that, you know. It makes the veterans, you know, feel welcome then, you know. But that's one thing that I've seen here, you know. It's very patriotic, and people are mindful of the veterans, they respect the veterans.
Do you have a message for the students of Laredo ISD?
Well, my message would be, you know, if you can join the military, any branch, whatever you want, because that's your main opportunity to give you a college education without no cost. And aside from the education, the experience you get, you know, like I said, responsibility, learning to take orders, being honorable, all those things sink in with the military.
Rodolfo Popo Aguilar. Laredo ISD thanks you for your service to our country.
Mr. Aguilar, we thank you publicly for serving our country and for putting your life at risk in the jungles of Vietnam. At this time, I ask everyone to please remain standing for the presentation of colors to be conducted by the Laredo Veterans Honor Guard with Color Guard members, Alex Martinez, formerly of the United States Marine, Juan Pena of the Navy, Jerry Vázquez with the Air Force and the Marines, Gregorio López with the Army, Victor Pena with the Army, Reyes Soto of the Air Force, and Abraham Rodríguez with the Navy. The National Anthem will be performed by a member of the Lamar Middle School Sweepstakes winning band, Miss Sofia Cardenas, under the direction of Miss Janie Rodríguez. Thank you, Sofia, for tonight's beautiful National Anthem. We also thank your sponsor, Miss Janie Rodríguez, and your assistant, Band Director Esteban Borja III and Fabian Reyes. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Aguilar, would you do us the honor of leading the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to thank the Laredo Veterans Honor Guard once again for presenting the colors for us tonight. We especially want to welcome our former LISD Board President, Mr. Abraham Rodríguez. Thank you so much. Everybody, please be seated. Thank you. Mr. Aguilar, we ask that you please join us up front with our Board of Trustees as they present to you with a token of tonight, of our appreciation for tonight, for your service to our country. We would also like to welcome your wife, Mrs. Norma Alicia Aguilar, and your daughter, Ms. Priscilla Díaz. The plaque being presented reads as follows: "The LISD Board of Trustees recognizes Mr. Rodolfo Aguilar for his patriotic ideals, selfless sacrifice, service to his country in the U.S. Army from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-seven as a Vietnam Combat Veteran and for advocating for local veterans," presented June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It's on.
Hello?
Yes.
Mr. Aguilar, on behalf of the Laredo Board of Trustees and our twenty thousand students, we would like to thank you for your service, for your patriotic ideals, selfless sacrifice, service to this country in the United States Army from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-seven as a Vietnam Combat Veteran and for advocating for local veterans. We also want to take this time to thank your colleagues for being here, presenting, you know, and helping us present the National Anthem and, of course, the Pledge of Allegiance. We really, really thank you for your service.
Check, check.
Chavito Ruben Tamp. My son-in-law and my grandson.
Yay.
On behalf of my family, I'm very grateful. It's very hard to be remembering you, your friends. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much again, Mr. Aguilar, and to all of your family for joining us tonight, and a special thanks to the Laredo Veterans Honor Guard for presenting our flags on this very special day. Thank you, sir. May I continue with special observances? Under special observances, Mr. Alfonso Myers passed away May nineteenth. He worked for LISD as an educator and taught at Cigarrón Middle School. He retired in nineteen ninety-nine with forty years of service. Juan Armando Ramos died on May twenty-first. He worked at LISD for three years as an electrician in the Division of Operations. Mr. Victor M. Oliveros passed away June the first. He worked for LISD for six years as a teacher at Memorial Middle School and then as a substance abuse coordinator and counselor with the ATWIS Department, and then at the José Valdés High School. We would also like to send our thoughts and prayers to the victims and families of the recent tragedy at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde. May we please have a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Myers, Mr. Ramos, and Mr. Oliveros, along with the families in Uvalde. May I continue with the board recognitions? Tonight, we are very proud to recognize the winners of the scholarships derived from our Scholars Golf Tournament. We are also congratulating the Class of two thousand twenty-two, and four award-winning publishers, the LISD Federal Programs Department, and the Division of Finance. Our Instructional Television Department has produced a video highlighting the winners from our second annual LISD Scholars Golf Tournament, which was held at the Max Mantel Golf Course. We're also recognizing graduates from Martin, Nixon, Cigarroa, and Garcia Early College High Schools, and four young ladies from Lamar Middle Schools whose writings are going to be published in this gigantic book entitled, "I Am Texas," sponsored by HEV. Lights, please.
I'm humbled to be here. A lot of them talk about, "Welcome to our new home." The taxpayers put up our community with a beautiful facility. You worked hard. Our teachers worked hard. Our teachers had to make it work one way or another, they made it work. It's a different world. It's changing every day. And our job is to train everybody to be ready for that. A lot are going to be different in a lot of our lives.
You achieved this very important milestone in your life by earning your high school diploma. Tomorrow, a new challenge awakes where it becomes a preparation towards seeking higher education, going straight into the workforce, or if you choose to join the armed forces. Meet that challenge with your head held high and your heart wide open, and the confidence that those who love you will assist you in your journey.
As the graduating class of two thousand twenty-two of the Hector J. Garcia Early College High School, it is an honor for me, and I'm humbled to speak on behalf of my colleagues on the Board of Trustees and from the administration. I want you to be kind. I want you to be truthful, to be honest, and then be kind again. Yes, kind, truthful, honest with yourselves and with those around you. And I'm confident that your generation will change our world for the better.
The greatest honor that the teachers can do for you is hold you to a higher standard. I've seen it at every LISD school, but at Nixon more so than not, everybody that rides you, that gets on you to be on time, to do your work, to get everything done, is doing it for a purpose. The purpose is to get you to be prepared for after high school, and they've done so. So, teachers, faculty, administrators, custodial staff, coaches, everybody. Congratulations, job well done.
Never in a million years did I ever think once that one day I would be standing here addressing the Class of two thousand twenty-two. As a school district, we have provided you with a foundation of education, and now it is time that you use your key of self-confidence to unlock your full potential. Congratulations, Class of twenty-two. Felicidades, padres, por esta gran honor. Thank you.
I wrote a poem about South Padre Island. I just wanted for everyone that read my poem to be like, "Oh, yeah, well, this island, we should go one time." Jen, I just find the ocean, like, very fascinating. I love being there.
Many people got chosen out of this book. You had many topics to choose out of front and write what you think about it. I wrote what foods we do in my family, the traditions, tamagis, manudo, pozole. Well, there's a lot of history behind my family. It was a great accomplishment of mine. I am super happy and glad I made my family proud.
There was more than a dozen words. I don't know the exact number, but I know there was more than a thousand words. And I wrote about some of the traditions for the things we do here in Laredo. I wanted to see how I could, like, what I could accomplish while doing it.
I did a tourist guide of Laredo about the foods, what we have in Laredo. It felt like a big accomplishment, and I'm really proud of it, so is my mom.
And now, we would like to recognize our Federal Programs Department. The goal of the Federal Programs School Improvement and Accountability Department is to equip all campuses with supplemental federal funds to acquire the necessary resources to provide a high-quality education for all of our students, including our homeless and migrant children. The department provides support for campuses with diverse models of learning experiences that are innovative and systemic. The department ensures that campuses are well-versed on state and federal accountability mandates. Representing the federal programs tonight are the following people. Here we have tonight, our grant writer, Mr. Scott Roberts, Ms. Kayla Solís, who is our migrant specialist, Ms. Gracie Pérez, who is our at-risk intervention coordinator, Ms. Cynthia Mendiola, at-risk intervention coordinator, Yolanda Mendoza, homeless and migrant coordinator, Dr. Elsa Barron, school improvement coordinator, Dr. Carmen Pampa, school improvement coordinator, Israel Castilla, Director of Accountability and Program Compliance, and Oralia H. Cortez, Executive Director for Federal Programs, School Improvement, and Accountability, and our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, School Operations, Ms. Flor Ayala. Ladies and gentlemen, our Federal Programs Department. Next is our Financial Management Department staff, who is awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for their annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. This certificate is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting. These awards and recognitions reflect our commitment These awards and recognitions reflect our commitment to serve the public interest with integrity, fiscal accountability, and transparency. Here representing the Financial Management Department are Gloria Vargas, who is our accounting manager, Edith Perez, accounting and budget coordinator, Rebecca Sarazua, Senior Accountant, Adolfo Gonzalez IV, Senior Accountant, and Flor Ayala, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Business Services. Congratulations both to Federal Programs and the Financial Management Department. We would like to congratulate all of our recipients tonight and keep up the great work, everybody. This concludes tonight's board recognitions.
I'm sending, I'm gonna take him around.
I am sorry.
No, it's all right. I'm gonna, because of the heat, I'm not gonna have a, a, a report. Word communication will wait till the very end.
Okay.
Dr. Rios, uh, number one. Oh, wait. Board communication, sorry.
Public comment.
Yeah, I went to this bottom.
Uh, we have Mr. Emiliano Paredes, Public Comment for J R T C.
Hello, my name is Emiliano Paredes.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Emiliano Paredes. I'm the Vettelen Commander of Martin High School of J R T C program. Our attorney advised us to, to give you, to give a second opportunity to y'all and stop coming to L I S D board meeting to advocate for the J R T C needs, and we truly hope that this time you are honest and sincere. You can start by bringing, giving our J R T C Coalition Committee a seat at the table for discussing our needs by bringing back Sergeant Martinez and parent volunteer, Mr. Ruiz. And please hire someone that is willing to train us and take us greater competition next year. We look forward to start working with L I S D. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Mr. Valentín Ruiz on employee raises and training materials.
Yes, my name is Valentín Ruiz. We have our First Amendment right of free speech, and this goes out to all the employees of L I S D because you need to voice your opinion. You will be retaliated against, you will, you will be blackballed. I'll give you an example. Sergeant Martinez is outside, he's a veteran, two tours, two, three tours, thank you. And él no puede entrar aquí y hablar, y es veterano, okay? Porque lo que hace el distrito, lo que me hicieron a mí, they criminalize you, los hacen mirar criminales. Los no los dejan que hablen con los parents, no los dejan que hablen con los estudiantes, y no los dejan que hablar con empleados del distrito. Y lo malo aquí, que los board members que están parados ahí arriba sentados, lo dejan que pase, pero su voz vale, y su voto también vale, quiero que se acuerden de eso cuando voten por ellos, que sus votos también valen. The, the teacher aides, los custodians, los food workers, nos dan mucho trabajo y nos pagan muy poquito, y sinceramente, 10% es una baba, 10% es una baba.
Sir, keep your voice, the language.
I'm sorry.
First language.
Dr. Rios, if I'm not mistaken, you got two raises during the pandemic. Am I correct? You, you can answer.
She can't answer.
I, I know the board members can answer, but she's an employee. Right, sir? Mr. Perez?
She's not supposed to answer, sir.
She's not supposed to answer.
Yeah, it's not for answering, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we'd like a copy of that policy. Recibió dos, dos raises, en el día y dice 300 mil dólares, y nosotros qué? Nos siguen pagando una baba. Pusieron fechas de Christian in Martin High School, un costo de medio millón de dólares, y nosotros qué? No necesitamos fechas, pero le dieron el jale a la familia de, de una of the board members that's at the front of me, and también le dieron un jale a su hermano. Y ahora me dicen que they, they employed another assistant principal in Cigarroa, and they don't even have the numbers. Ese es otro cheque de 150 mil dólares a año más o menos, y nosotros qué? No valemos, no se pueden caer, amigos. Aboardalentes, mándanos policías para allá, van, mándanos a los otros.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz.
I'm sorry?
Thank you, sir.
That's three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now we have Ms. Clarissa Fraga on employee raise.
Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking you for allowing your speakers the opportunity to voice their concerns. And I'd also like to commend the, the people who are speaking today because we do know that there are a lot of educators out there who wish to speak but fear the retaliation, as was just stated. I am here today merely as a member of the community and an advocate, in hopes that I could help you understand why your employees are in dire need of a substantial raise, which will help them meet their basic needs. I sat here and I saw your posters. I'm not an employee of your district, but I'm quite disappointed to see and hear the comments that were just made, being that, yes, you do have employees who lead with heart, who inspire change and who support growth, and that's how you treat them? As you're aware, inflation is increasing day by day. Your employees are buying less and less because they are earning the same amount of money, which doesn't allow them to keep up with inflation. We know you are not responsible for the rise in inflation, but it's no secret that you do possess the power and the authority to make responsible decisions that will determine whether or not you will keep highly qualified personnel or struggle with a shortage of employees. The competition is fierce right now throughout the state of Texas. For that reason, there are many of your employees who chose not to participate in your summer school program. As we know, gas is expensive right now. It's increased dramatically. During the year, your school personnel were carpooling to help each other save gas, and while that seemed like a smart solution, it became problematic when emergencies arose as they were left with the realization that they were left without a vehicle. Let us not forget that COVID has and continues to play a drastic role in financial hardships, creating a long-lasting domino effect that has been hard to overcome. Working children became unemployed, forcing parents, your employees, to step up and help them take over their payments. Groceries have increased. The financial hardships have led to deferments on homes, vehicle loans, student loans, and in most extreme cases, your employees have spoken to me about their deferments turning to forbearances, loan modifications, causing shortages in escrow, increasing mortgage taxes, and their taxes have been affected. The domino effect carries on to your teachers, who are unable to pay for their student loans, ending up with garnishment of wages and other consequences. Please take a moment to take all this in and understand what I'm really trying to get to, and that is that your highly educated individuals with a four-year degree are struggling to make it in life. What message does that send to prospective educators? Now consider the lack of decent pay and overwhelming increase in workload, the redundancy of everything, the loads of trainings that seem to never deem an educator qualified enough, the many roles and, the many roles one single educator plays in the life of a child, teacher, discipliner, nurse, counselor, advocate.
Ms. Fraga, thank you.
That's three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
I gave the exact same speech at U I S D.
Do you, do you wanna see the stopwatch, ma'am? Now we have Ms. Cristina Hernández.
Hi, my name is Cristina Hernández. I'm here representing the Laredo I S D Transportation Department. I'm here to say my concerns and our pay as we are seeing prices on food, gas, bills, et cetera, go up. We at Transportation have a very, very big responsibility as we carry precious cargo. We do not carry books, food, or mail cartons. We as bus drivers, bus monitors, are committed to our students 100% as we transport them to schools, games, and field trips, and et cetera. So I ask you, the Laredo I S D Board, to please commit to us as, us and give us a 9% raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Ms. Cristina Rodriguez on employee raises.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es María Cristina Rodríguez, y estoy aquí también en representación de transportación, y estoy también apoyando a mi compañera, lo que acaba de decir, nada más quiero decir una, tres frases. Queremos un aumento, necesitamos un aumento, y el tercero y más importante de todos, y creo que todos vamos a estar de acuerdo, merecemos ese aumento.
Gracias. Now we have Ms. María Iris on employee raise.
My name is María Iris. I'm an employer, L I S D Transportation. I just wanted to say that we really need a raise because I know the teachers, that they have the raise and everything, but we, as, I'm as a parent, I have a daughter that is a teacher, and they don't give us, the ones that take the kids to school, bring them from school, the people that clean, the people that cook, all those persons are there, and because of them, that's why the students are there, and why are they not giving us a raise? Like, we need that raise. We need it. Like, everything, like, they say everything is good enough, very high, and we don't have that much money to, and I don't live far from where I work, but I know a lot of people do live very far from their work, and the gas is way too high. So I actually just wanted to support my L I S D Transportation so we can have a raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Ms. Griselda Garza on employee salary.
Buenas tardes, miembros del board y público en general. Mi nombre es Griselda Garza, y estoy aquí representando y apoyando a mis compañeros de transportación y todo el I S D. Ha sido tres años esperando aumento de sueldo, no ha ocurrido. Espero estoy, espero y se toque en su corazón, y entiendan que es necesario, pero ya, más promesas, no, más promesas, por favor. Gracias.
Gracias. Now we have Carmen Pérez on employee raise.
Hello, board. My name is Ms. Carmen Pérez, and I am accompanied by Ms. Sylvia Domínguez. We are part of the Webb County Democratic Party Educators Caucus, a group of 125 paraprofessionals, teachers, and administrators. I come before you to emphasize the connection between the Texas teacher resignation crisis and low and frozen salaries. According to a poll conducted by Raise Your Hand Texas, an educator advocacy group in 2020, 49.8% of teachers from the 2011-2012 cohort resigned in 2020. That's almost 50%. I am part of that cohort. I started teaching in 2011, and I'm currently a counselor in another district. This trend translates to 43,000 teachers leaving the profession in 2021-2022 school year, as stated by the Charles Foundation Poll. This poll also finds that poor pay and benefits, along with feelings of underappreciation, are the main contributing factors to resignations. This doesn't account for teachers also feeling that their pay does not reflect their hard work with increasing expectations and trainings that they must attend. In fact, about 73% of adult Texans polled feel that teachers are paid very low. In fact, low earning potential contributes to why 51% of Texas adults would not want their child to become a teacher. That is a devastating fact that is affecting our potential educators. We must increase wages to not only continue to benefit our future and to inspire our future children who are watching. Please do your part to reduce the upcoming teacher shortage and crisis and give raises to all district employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Mr. Juan Ramírez on employee raise.
Good evening, honorable board members and Dr. Rios. Tonight, I stand here before you in support of a pay raise for all L I S D employees. I know at this point in time, it's very difficult financially for everybody, including the board, but we have to keep in mind that as we sit here tonight, prices continue to rise, groceries prices have risen, gasoline, utilities, rent, insurance costs as well. So I'm here asking you to please consider a pay raise. I know you have a very important decision to do, but please look for everybody that is here for the district. On a daily basis, teachers continue to worry on their, working on their daily lesson plans as to how they're going to continue to educate our children. Paraprofessionals continue to answer phone calls in their campuses, they continue to attend the constitutional seat, they continue to register students for their next school year, and also they continue to work to improve their attendance. Custodial staff continue to make sure that all campuses are clean and ready to be used for the next following day, as to all facilities in our district. Securities and police officers continue to provide the safety for every single student in our community and for every single employee in our district. As to the drivers in transportation, I've heard them mention, they, that is correct, they continue to move our students to and from the, our activities, pick them up at home, drop them off at their campuses. And in addition, I ask you to, they, they, they are here thinking at what bills they're gonna pay, which one am I gonna pay first, which one am I gonna ask to get an extension, what am I gonna serve for dinner tonight? Why not assist them in taking that burden off their backs? I know as you all sit there, we also have the same problems that we all have, but please take it upon yourself to kindly provide that assistance that everybody needs. This will be an investment that will be done for our future students in our community. Teach, as teachers come in, they prepare for their, the test to meet them state mandated requirements. That is a hard job to do. Imagine what would happen if one day the custodial staff would not show up to work. What are we gonna do? We have seen how unfortunate situations have happened in our communities. It's so sad to see the tragedy that has happened, but please keep in mind, guys, I ask you from the bottom of my heart, please be humble, I know you all are, I appreciate what you do, but you have a decision to make. I ask you to assist them in easing their pain and not burden them with anymore. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we have Ms. María Trevino, teacher.
I'm not gonna beg for a salary, I need some salary. I'm gonna present factual data, because I don't think that this has to be resolved by feelings, all right? As a taxpayer, I'm aware that Laredo I S D Board of Trustees approved an average of 25% of tax increasing, increment on this year. 25% of increasing, guys. And this is more than three times the current annual inflation rate. What is the basis? What is the basis of this excessive increase on taxes? Where is my money as taxpayer going to? Since I haven't seen any dramatic improvements in the school, I haven't. So what is the 25% of this increase? On the other hand, the average classroom teacher salary has decreased by an estimated 4% in the past decade. And now, we're seeing that the Laredo ISD Board is disconnected from reality. I can see my colleagues saying the same things and examples. They are disconnected from reality. There are many taxpayers strolling not only to pay their taxes, but also to cover basic needs. Our work and risk are increasing while the purchasing power and real salary is decreasing. Yes, is decreasing after discounting the inflation rate. Because the board is proposing a compensation, not even a salary, a compensation as a salary increment that is less than the current inflation rate. You hear correctly. The compensation, which is not a salary increase, is less than inflation rate, so it's negative, it's decreasing. Do you understand that? It's not about feeling, it's about reality, factual data, this is what we have. We don't have to beg, we don't have to implore, we have to demand what is fair, what is just. Board of Trustees, you have the power to mitigate this negative impact on district families. This evening, you have the power, you have the option of being fair with teachers and staff by doing the right thing at the right time. We, the teachers, we asking today that LISD Board approve as a bare minimum. Even though my colleague says another adjective for the 10%, I tell you, maybe someone did, and I agree with you. But at least as a bare minimum, a 10%.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Item number one. Thank you, everyone, for being here and for celebrating all of the achievements of the people who were first recognized. As well, not the committee reports, as well as, we're not gonna do committee reports? No. Okay, as well as addressing all of the concerns that have been brought to us. Item number one, discussion and presentation on the Laredo ISD Constructional Continuity Plan, including a state assessment update, summer school plans, and the Jump Start Program. I know that Dr. Cruz has done an exceptional job working with CNI to be able to go through the committee meeting to be able to discuss several of these things. I would like to state that at this point in time, there was a partial report on students who took the STAR assessment either online or on paper form. The last thing that we were looking for was a compilation of the paper-based results. That report will be coming to you very soon as soon as all of those data have been compiled. There are some really good gains, but I just want to let you know that's gonna happen. So there's no presentation right now? Unless you would want to have that presentation? No, we're good. It's just an update. As far as summer school plans, all of our staff, including CNI, as well as all of principals and teachers involved in delivering a summer school program, have been working together to provide two different types, actually several different types of programs in June. We're gonna have a Jump Start Program beginning in August and those details will be coming to you very soon. In regards to meetings, I just want to point out to our Board of Trustees that we do have a set of a calendar for you to look at the meetings for the next school year. But I do want to remind you that in July, we are looking only to do a board. Yeah, we're looking just at July, unless we have a special call meeting, we have no meeting in July. And that is because some of our staff will be taking their vacation days. So at the same time, we want to have everybody be able to re-energize. In your packet, very quickly, you're going to see a revised school calendar and some other data that you are being asked to please review as we move forward. I do want to commend all of our staff for working diligently, especially our finance department. There's been a lot of back and forth, and the human resources department, in being able to be able to provide some options for our board that we can, as a school district, afford as we move forward. Yeah, I do also, thank you very much for all the work that you've done. It's been a lot. I know I've been sitting in those meetings. Thank you, human resources, recalculating, everybody. I want to first, I want to welcome Maggie back. Now, the bad news is that we're not renewing your contract. Bye. Welcome back. Motion to approve the minutes from May the 19th. Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion to approve the financial. Are you, anything? Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion to approve 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, 4E, 4F, 4G. So move. There's a motion, the second, any comments or questions on any of those? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion to approve 5A, 5B, 5C, 5D, 5E, 5F, 5G, 5H, 5I, 5K, 5L, 5M. There's a motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, we skipped the 5J for, we're not gonna bring the table. We're gonna table that. So move. Motion to table, second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, are you recommending tax refund? Yes, sir. So move to approve. Second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion to approve 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. So move, second. The motion is second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion to table number eight and set it up for workshop. So move.
Second that.
Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, thank you. Dr. Rios? Item number 16, discussion and possible action on the following budget amendment, BA number 2122, discussion and possible action to approve the General Operating Fund Budget Amendment in the amount of $7,700. And I believe that we are omitting that one. We need to.
Do I move? I move to disregard that?
There's a motion? Second.
16A.
Right? Yes. All those in favor? Aye. Against, thank you. Item number 17, discussion and presentation on the selection process for school legends committees. I know that everyone here believe or understands that every one of our high schools does have a selection process, but they're isolated to every different high school. And the criteria is not necessarily the same. And Mr. Garcia, I believe you have some comments regarding this?
I just, in my version of opinion, I think it needs to be, it needs to be at the schools. I know some of them, schools have nothing to do with them, they're just sponsoring them. I think the credentials need to be pretty much the same around the district in all three schools, and the committee should be with the principal. And yes, the public, but also with administration. Yeah, because I see some that after 2000, you don't see anybody being recognized in 22 years. So I think that the schools need to take charge of this. They need to work with the public, yes. But they need to be the key runners in this, that's all I'm saying. Credentials and all that, you can put them together, but I just think it needs to be the same across the board.
So, Mr. Garcia and trustees, I would like to recommend that we get a committee together of all of the high schools to put criteria together and so that that way it's a consistent process across the district for each of these selections. And maybe two board members sit on that so they can have the input from our side so they can bring something to the board for action. So if two people want to, you want to do that? Two people want to volunteer?
I would like to be on that committee.
Mr. Garza?
Yeah, I'll do that.
We can put up to three because, anybody else wants to?
I'm good.
I'm in agreement because.
Those two could be in it, just to put the. So input.
I think that a lot of times, what ends up happening in my own experience is that they have the, they're overwhelmed. This is a lot of stuff is done by volunteers. And you know, you have your daily rigors of work and whatever. And then the day comes when you have to already put a group of people together. And then some of them turn you down. And so now you're left with struggling to find somebody that might not even meet the standard, just to plug in somebody. So, yeah, I agree with this. It's a good idea.
And no offense, I think the people that we've been doing it such a long time, take out of their own time and do an excellent job.
Right.
But I think we need to take some of that pressure off their back and take some responsibilities outside the district. And the only reason we're doing it, the only reason I brought that up, I think it's very important that it's pressured not just on them, but on everybody. So we're consistent across the board.
Well, and if you all can just wait till August, when we come back, we can put this committee together at the same time. It will be standardized criteria and it can be communicated to the public. Okay, thank you. Okay, may I move forward? Item number 18, discussion and possible action to approve the commitment of the savings of $790,500 from budget amendment BA 2122-54 transfer out to the debt service fund to fund the 2022-2023 capital improvement plan. As we have been discussing in our deliberations for budget, remember we said that because we're on such a tight budget, we didn't have, we had not allocated the 1.5 million that we usually do for capital improvements. And Floyd, you may add a little bit more information. Is this is what this is for, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And this currently in the budget, we're not budgeting the capital improvement plan. And these funds are available right now and we are gonna be setting aside during the end of the school year.
So I think that this would be a good idea. All you can see is the heat right now. We just had a part of a transformer actually get messed up. And so we just want to be able to have some funding available in case there should be some big projects that need to be handled right off the bat. So move to approve?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, thank you. Okay. Item number 19, discussion and possible action to approve the commitment of the disaster pennies in the amount of $8,894,991 to fund for expenditures related to the physical damages produced by severe weather to the district's facilities and infrastructure. And I know that Ms. Ayala can speak to it a little bit more, but in reference to a comment that was made that taxing to the public had increased by, I was saying, double-digit percentage. That is not correct.
Not correct.
But we, I would like for Ms. Ayala to further expound on this particular topic.
Please.
Thank you, Dr. Rios. If you recall, last year, the board approved a resolution to adopt some golden and copper pennies. And the board did so, so based on Hurricane Hannah, the state did provide that opportunity for school boards to take action on that without having to go out and vote. What approval? Order approval. So based on that, we are able to calculate how much those golden pennies and the copper penny generated. And it is that amount of $8.89 million, $8.8 million. And we are gonna be setting aside those funds so that when we proceed with a replacement of roofs for the school, we'll have money available to make those improvements.
And the roofs is one of the examples because it was related to that hurricane. It is a one-time opportunity at that time when you committed the taxing for the copper and the golden pennies, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And those three, 3.09 pennies generated about $900,000 in local funds and the state matched it with $7.7 million.
And so that's how we were able to gain some relief in that particular aspect. So we are looking to recommend this particular action. So move to approve?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, thank you. Okay, may I proceed? Please. Item number 20.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me just ask. Ms. Ayala? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we've exhausted every avenue of support, outside support within these pennies that we're gonna use, that we've exhausted every avenue of support that will offset some of the cost. I know disaster relief comes, it's a big definition when you put the word disaster in front of something. And sometimes I just want to make sure that the expenditures that we're making are directly associated with disaster that we are obligated to fix and not another entity around town or whatever.
Yes, and that is the purpose of these funds. Sometimes when hurricanes pass by or other types of disasters, we don't see the actual damage until it rains.
Correct.
And so we recognize the, how the buildings got impacted. So in order to qualify for these funds, it really has to be a major capital repair so that we can continue with improving our schools.
And I think the school board, this board took initiative, I think a year or two years, by making sure that we put this aside to keep that fund. We talked about maybe trying to use some of this fund for pay raises, but thinking, no, we need to be what we went out to. So we kept it aside and we kept it where it is.
That's why we're asking to commit that.
That's what we're gonna keep on committee.
No, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that everything that we use is exactly the cost that pertains to us. And if there's any other agency that has their hand in this, that they pay their fair share so that we don't have to use any more money to offset that.
Yes.
Thank you. Next. Item number 20, discussion and possible action to amend the 2022-23's classic year calendar. In your bound book, you will see two calendars, the one that was approved in January and the one that we have revised in June. We looked at the surrounding school districts and what they were doing and how our calendar can be improved. So we actually ran through it again and you're going to see some early dismissal days. You're also gonna be able to see how we are looking to help our employees, especially during the holidays, to re-energize. So we are recommending that this calendar, which really has the same amount of days, but the way it's laid out, it actually will afford our employees some more rest. Four days, right? Yes. Four days that we're giving them and we're paying them and they're not working. So that's inside what we're gonna do, technically. Technically. So we are asking for you, we did pass it out to you so that you could see. Motion to adjourn? I mean, adjourn, motion to approve? It's hot, guys. But that's a good idea, no? Motion second, all those in favor? Against? Thank you. Sorry, that's a good thinking, it's hot. And this calendar does go into the finance piece. Item number 21, discussion and possible action to approve the district's health insurance self-funded plans with no changes to the cost or current benefits for the calendar school year. We are recommending that you approve this item. There were no premium increases. We are looking for the future to see how that will materialize and maybe there will be some other savings to our employees. But for this time, as we're transitioning in this very, very challenging budget year, we're asking that you approve this recommendation. So move to, second. There's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor? Aye. Against, next. Item number 22, discussion and update on the 2022-2023 annual budget. Obviously, we are not asking that you approve the budget. That is not going to happen till June 28. But there are two things that need to happen between now and then. First of all, we have to give public notice 10 days before the 28th. So that means that on June the 18th, it must be published. This also means that tomorrow, we need to send a copy of our preliminary budget. And it's not by line item, but it is by big picture, I was gonna say, just to make it simpler. I also want to tell you that at the last discussion that we had regarding budget, we did take into consideration your suggestions. And so we have several options that we have put together for your consideration. But before we do that, I do want to tell you that we have worked exceptionally hard to make sure that our budget is balanced and that it is sustainable. With your approval, what we did was we actually cut, not cut, froze 100 and closed 100. With your approval, what we did was we actually cut, not cut, froze a hundred and seven, closed a hundred and seventy-seven positions. That is a lot for our school district. So we are paying attention. The positions that do remain are going to help us in case that there are more students that show up. Dr. Ramida Trevino is going to be here to discuss some of these options. We did, we do have a basic recommendation that we know that we can afford. However, this is for your consideration as we move forward. Please take it and take in mind that the options that we're presenting to you, really the option that we're going to recommend, the most affordable one, is going to be option number two. It is difficult to make this happen, and you can't just take out of one bucket and hope for the best. It has to be balanced. So, Dr. Trevino?
Thank you. Good evening, board members. First of all, just to reiterate with Dr. Rios is that the Finance and Human Resources Department has been working diligently because we do recognize the stress that the current climate is placing on employees, ourselves included, with the rising food and gas prices. And so we are cognizant of that. However, we also have to make sure that we are looking out for the best interest of the district, of course. In your packet, you have two sheets, two scenarios or repeated scenarios. But on the first one, we've given two scenarios with four options. On scenario one, it's the one, the, not three, the two.
Wait, wait, Dr. Trevino. If you look in this, in this folder, not folder, but bound, you're going to see towards the end, you're going to see the two options or the options or the scenarios. Again, you know, it's taken a lot of work with numbers. It's not completely finalized, but we do ask that you consider it. Dr. Trevino?
So in an effort to, again, work with the Finance Department to be able to identify monies, to be able to provide an increase to our employees, we have currently closed a hundred and seventy-seven positions, both teachers, professional and paraprofessional positions, in order to free up some monies in the general fund. What you have on the first scenario, which we reviewed last week, is providing an increase of a thousand fifty dollars to teachers, a one percent to administrators and professionals, and a three percent to paraprofessionals. You'll see that that total along with benefits equals to three and a half million dollars. Option one point two provides eleven hundred dollars to teachers, one percent to administrators and professionals, and three percent to paraprofessionals, and that would be three point five eight five million dollars. On the second scenario, we keep the teacher allotment the same at a thousand fifty, but increase the percentage for administrators, professionals, and paraprofessionals to two and three percent respectively, for a total of three point eight million dollars. And option two point two, eleven hundred dollars to the teachers, two and three percent to administrators and paraprofessionals, for a total of three point nine.
Before Dr. Trevino moves forward, I just want to let you know that the difference between a raise and a one-time bonus is that this has to be sustained the next year. So whatever you're, whatever is going to be approved tonight, it is something that's going to continue in the year to come. In the second page, you have a third option, and Dr. Trevino, can you please discuss that in your packet?
So just for the benefit of the board and for the record, staff is recommending the scenario one, option one point two. However, to just provide you with other options, option one point three provides a one thousand two hundred dollar increase to teachers, one percent and three percent for paraprofessionals, and that would total at three point seven five six million dollars for that option. And option two point three, again, does the twelve hundred dollars for teachers, two and three percent respectively for administrators and paraprofessionals, for a total of four million dollars. So those are the options before the board, and we are respectfully asking for directions so that we can then work with our system to plug in and clean up the general fund and be able to have a clearer picture of where the district stands with respect to identifying additional monies.
I know you're recommending option one, two. Is it the option two point two, which is the one, the one thousand one hundred, two percent, but instead of Paris, three percent, go to four percent?
So you want a two percent and a four percent?
The two percent for administration and four percent instead of three percent.
Can we try this out? I don't know if it works on the eleven hundred. Put it to a thousand and then put admin, three and para, five percent? I don't know if that's too high, but.
The difference, the problem is, if you figure it out in number wise.
If possible, if possible.
So let's just say instead of the thousand, let's look up at the thousand fifty. So at a thousand fifty, that's one point six forty million for teachers. If the administrators, if we increase that to three percent, instead of the two hundred and ninety-three, we would be looking at eight hundred and eighty thousand. So let me quickly try to do the math here. Somebody help.
But I am going to say something, Mr. Gomez, as you're doing the math. If you go from one thousand six hundred and forty to the one thousand, sorry, to the one million seven hundred and eighteen thousand, that's only like seventy-eight thousand. That seventy-eight thousand will not, that's roughly seventy-eight thousand, that seventy-eight thousand will not cover a five percent for, because there's more paraprofessionals than there are teachers.
Way more.
So it won't, it won't cover, that amount will not be covered.
You can give administration one percent and then give them five percent, but then your administration.
So the way Mr. Gomez asked for the two percent and four percent and a thousand fifty for teachers, that would put us at four million two hundred and twenty-four thousand.
No, I said three percent admin and five para.
I mean, yes, I'm sorry. Three percent admin and four, and four for Paris?
Five.
Oh, five for Paris, okay.
I thought you said that it would be three percent for admin, which is a very small number of people. But if you're looking for that and then you're increasing the Paris, which is a bigger number, it's like, is it one thousand eight hundred Paris? A little bit more than that. What happens is that there's not enough money to, even if you take it away from them, to put it over here on this other side.
Just looking for options to see what's out there.
I just think, I think if you're going to reward, you need to reward your teacher first.
Yes, I agree.
Paraprofessional, the non-administration. Administration, I believe that, but we've always done one or two. We, are we, you know, are we basing ourselves on, the way I've always looked at it, we have a limited amount of, and in particularly this case, three point six million dollars. And you can slice it any way you want. And, but anything else other than that, you can play with the numbers in here.
Within that range. I mean, you know, once we start adding more to it, once we pass that threshold, we're going to have to close a lot more positions and cancel other things in order to be able to accommodate this. And then I want to remind you that it is an ongoing cost. It's not a one-time cost. And so you have to be able to sustain this year after year. When we add the five percent, that comes out to two point one million dollars for paraprofessionals, and then eight hundred and eighty thousand for administrators plus one point six million, you know, you're already way over.
Right. We don't have, we don't have, we don't have a.
So then option two point two would be overall the best option, just the way it is?
We don't have a bank unless you're going to figure out what position you want to close. We already closed a hundred and seventy-seven positions to do this.
Yes.
And if you want to close more, tell us what to close. We can tell the principals. You can't, that person left, not coming back, we can't use the money. I think you're putting enough money to use about four, that's what you're saying. You can move it around, but the teacher to administration, that's a big, every, every one percent of a teacher is almost two hundred and some thousand dollars compared to teacher, which is a lot less because there are a lot less number. Paraprofessional, there's a lot, lot more number. So as I say, you can go to four. You can add a lot to that because it's four times a thousand two hundred, whatever it is, to do that. But I would, I mean, teachers, I think deserve a thousand one hundred. I was trying to, I was telling them to try to bring a thousand two hundred, but we couldn't, they couldn't find the money. We'd have to kill another twenty positions, thirty positions.
Just looking at options, not saying that we're going to do it exactly the way I'm asking for other options, just having an idea of what direction to take.
What is the average salary of a paraprofessional? Twenty thousand?
Floyd?
Let's say twenty thousand. Three percent, that's three hundred dollars.
There's just a lot of different groups, Mr. Mayola, so it's not like just one.
Let's say twenty, twenty thousand. At three percent, that's three hundred dollar raise. That's not enough.
But, but it is ongoing. In other words, it keeps adding to their, to their bucket where if you give a one percent, I mean, if you give a one time, a one time is just this year, that's it. Their salary doesn't change after, after this year. So you'll have different sides to consider. You'll have a group of employees. I mean, I asked our custodian today, what would you prefer? Would you prefer one time of this or would you prefer a percentage increase? He said, I'd prefer the percentage increase. I said, even if it's only twenty dollars a month? Yes, only if it's twenty dollars a month because it keeps adding to their, to their final line, so to speak.
Real quick for you all, you can also go, because I actually asked the question, I go, you give a paraprofessional, give him a thousand dollars across the board, one time. But they're, they're asking for, that's what I don't understand. I go, I take the thousand dollars, I can spend it now. It can go into your retirement and all, but it doesn't go into their next year because they're trying to build. If I get three percent next year, it might be a better year for you all. You go four, five percent like we used to. It's a higher number.
Right. The common word here has got to be sustainability. Numbers might change next year, and we might not be able to sustain that increase. So we have to give a one-time payment right now and see how it goes next year with ADA. Then I think that's, I think that was my mentality coming into today. You know, we might not, we might not be in the same position this year. Next year, if ADA goes up, we might be better, we might be able to offer something better.
You've got to remember also, our budget was based on, our budget was based on three thousand less students than were expected. That's about twenty million dollars.
So another thing, and I'm just going to interject here real quick, Mr. Garcia. I understand the frustration, you know, of, you know, the bus drivers that we had here, you know, wasting their opinion today. I mean, of CMP workers that were here, you know, the passport meeting. I understand, you know, where everything is being, you know, the inflation of gas prices, and it's only going to get worse within this year. You know, we already received letters from many vendors where they're already stating that they are going to go up in prices of twenty-five percent. And that is to every government entity, you know, that that's going to happen. Now, you know, right now, you know, Mr. Garcia did mention something that was very important, the sustainability of our budget is what is, is what we're talking about. But we also need to understand the other piece, the sustainability, and then the piece where, you know, these people are barely making ends meet because their salaries are not that high. Now, do we understand, you know, that, you know, it's needed, that they need it? Yes, we do, because even in my own employment, I needed myself, but I haven't gotten one in five years, maybe. But again, you know, in going back to this and going back into different scenarios, you know, and actually basing ourselves to the baseline of the three point nine million that we're basically talking about on the two scenario, option two point two. What Mr. Gomez was actually talking about was, I think you said five percent and two percent?
Five and three.
Five and three or five and two, and then the thousand fifty, that brings us up to four point six million. So in that scenario, we're only missing six hundred thousand dollars. And I understand that next year is going to be, you know, a sustainability going forward. But what are we actually doing as a board to retain our employees? Because we need them as well. You know, we have to be considerate of all these people also going forward. Because, you know, I mean, we, what we want is for our employees to stay here. And I understand that there's sometimes, that there's going to be reasons where they're not happy with the outcome. You know, but, you know, we also need to make sure that we turn in a balanced budget. That's, you know, because that's what we have to do lawfully in order to continue to operate as a district. You know, but that's what I've been seeing and what I've been calculating in numbers, where he was mentioning that five percent, it's a six hundred thousand dollar difference. Is it something that maybe we can, or cuánto, Ms. Bobby?
I think it's more.
The total, if you do the ten fifty, three and five percent, it'd be approximately four point six five million.
And we only have three point five.
Yeah, they're, they're around three point five, that's all they can find. So anything after three point five, that's fine. Just tell where we're going to cut positions to get that extra six thousand dollars.
I mean, I'm just kidding, you know, you know, my opinion, you know, as far as, I understand the frustration, and I understand that it's only going to get worse.
Yeah, we just have to be clear-eyed and, and, I mean, everybody in here is cognizant of and sympathizes with everybody. Shoot, outside of this room, you know, there's some of us that are, we don't get a, a raise unless, you know, things happen out in the economy, you know. It's not, it's not guaranteed every day. So I'm cognizant and I'm sympathizing with everybody with what they're doing. The greatest thing about this board, though, is that over the last ten, twelve years, our credibility has been there. We've done every single thing. We've turned over every rock for every penny to try and figure out how we're going to do it. And sometimes if we've gotten, we've gone overboard on doing it, rightfully so. And sometimes we haven't met the expectation that some employees want. But the thing is, we've been transparent with them, you know. This thing about, you know, getting another one point one million, we just have to tell them, you know, we have to be telling everybody, look, we're going to cut here so that you can get. We just want everything to be laid out in front so that everybody understands. We're going to cut here, 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 so that you can get if it gets approved. If not, you know, because again, we're at eighteen thousand kids this year. Nothing is saying that we're going to go back to twenty-one. It can go to sixteen next year. And if it goes to sixteen, we got to cut some more. And we got to figure out, because next year, I guarantee you, the people are still going to be sitting on those chairs telling us we want a raise. And so that's just the reality of it. And so we either face it now and, and understand, like I said, there's nothing, this doesn't have anything to do with sympathizing and not being cognizant of everybody's needs out there. I certainly need it. Everybody needs it right now. So we just can't break the bank to get it there. That's, that's my thing.
One thing I want to remind the board is, the last ten years, this board has always produced. Right now, our salary scale is higher than anybody in the area. When we gave five thousand to everybody, our sister school just gave twenty-five hundred. So we've always been ahead of everybody, and we continue to find it, to give, there hasn't been one year that this board said no to any, some kind of raise. We've gone from point five percent for administration to one, two, three percent. We've gone from three percent to paraprofessional to five percent, six percent, when times are good. Right now, it's a tight year.
I also want to mention, just for you all to recall, remember when everybody was on a two hundred and thirty calendar contract? They actually went to two twenty-six. So you, as a district, approved four days, kept the pay for everybody, but you gave them four days of pay anyway, even though they went from two hundred and thirty to two hundred and twenty-six. And that's something that, that I know the employees value because I will tell you that in vacation time, sometimes they would have one day, two days, sometimes three days, and that was vacation time, non-contract days. So the reality is that we do have three point six. We do have to send something to be published by tomorrow at the end of the day so that it can be published by the eighteenth. Now, anything that cannot sustain that budget, then you're talking about looking at the tax rate, and we don't want to do that. We want to be able to, you know, now, we need direction from you so that tonight and during the morning, they can, I'm talking about Finance and HR, actually calculate and put it to, you know, into a format. So if you're saying right now what I'm hearing, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that if we're going to be looking at this, you're looking at four percent for paraprofessionals. Now, just remember that this side of the columns, that's already an increase from scenario one to scenario two. That's already an increase from scenario one to scenario two because you're looking at a two percent for, for professionals. So be thinking, what is the direction that you want us to work on so that it can be sent off?
I think, I'm going to make a motion, you all can do whatever.
No, you don't have to make the motion.
Well, not a motion, but I think that we should look at direction to go with option two, but the paraprofessional, three percent, four percent?
Three percent and four percent?
Instead of three percent, four percent.
On option two point two.
Right.
Option two point two.
On scenario two, option two point two, teachers eleven hundred, administration two percent, and Paris four percent.
Correct. So move to approve that.
There's no action.
We don't have to vote on each direction because they got to print it.
It will be approved on the twenty-eighth.
One thing I want to do, I do want to mention is that we're looking also at the possibility, there's no increase in. One thing I want to do, I do want to mention is that we're looking also at the possibility, there's no increase in insurance. One, and we're going to look in, in, uh, as soon as we get some number back, actually giving them a rebate or they don't have to pay as much, the district will pick it up, because we didn't get hit as hard. So that's a big possibility that happening. Now, just one more thing, once you approve the budget, or once we go back and approve the budget, next year, if you see the numbers at the very beginning, like we're always checking our numbers, if we see an increase in, in students, then you could do an amendment, not a raise, but you could do amendment on getting some of those positions back. You can start making amendments to fill in what you're, what you're getting rid of right now. But it's going to be tight. I know principals are saying, I'm not getting my teacher back. Nope. Unfortunately, we can't.
Miss Ayala, what are the chances of LIC getting some funding in, uh, July, August from the state or federal government?
It is the second, uh, year of the legislature, so, uh, we don't get, there's nothing addition that the state will be giving to us unless they tweak the form.
So chances are slim?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But for next year, maybe they'll make adjustments to the basic allotment and we will be able to jump back.
Miss Ayala, and another quick question. I know, um, San Antonio, Houston is going to four days, uh, schools. Like four days out of.
Work day, work week?
Work week. Um, is that an option that maybe we would want to go forward in order, you know, in these crucial times that, you know, that we're having? Maybe would that be an option that you can maybe bring back?
Too late for this school year. It's too late for this school year.
For what?
It's because Houston and San Antonio are going to four-day work weeks.
Four-day week instead of five.
And, and I will tell you that if that would be the case, you'd still have to make up those hours because, um, teachers do have a contract of a hundred and eighty-seven days. So at this point, I think that we would have to study that and see how that would translate, not only into being able to pay hourly workers, but at the same time, being able to meet the standards for curriculum.
I mean, it's just an option, Dr. Trevino, and maybe if you all bring us back, like, maybe an option or something, I don't know.
Point of order.
We can look at the other.
For the school year or just for the regular?
School year.
Same point of order, right?
Like, I don't know if you can probably discover how, um, Houston and San Antonio is doing it?
Yeah.
Just to see if we can kind of replicate it to see.
Yeah, I know that, but we, we need to stay on the, on the budget.
So just to summarize then, Mr. Garcia, uh, teachers eleven hundred, administrators two percent, paraprofessionals four percent, that would bring the total to approximately four million dollars. So we have already closed a hundred and seventy-seven positions. We will continue to work on, on doing that and, um, cleaning up so that we can have some final for tomorrow.
So I beg, I beg the next question that you have to answer. So a-again, it's, it's taken from one pocket and put in the other. How is that going to affect us? How is getting a hundred and seventy-seven positions? Some of them were not filled as it was.
Yes, right. Some of them were, have been vacant all year. The majority of them are the ones that have left this year. And, um, so what does that mean? Well, it could possibly mean larger class sizes, uh, because there's less teachers to disperse kids around. So teachers may have, particularly at the secondary, uh, may have larger classes than they've had in the last couple of years. Um, because we have been fortunate enough to be able to provide campuses with additional personnel so that they can have their teaming and small, small class groups, um, both at, uh, uh, well, elementary twenty-two to one and then middle and high school.
That's what, that's what we need to lay out to the public in order, in order for, for us to give a fair and balanced, uh...
But it's not just only teachers, it's also other positions.
But we have to, we have to, we have to make sure that everybody hears both sides of the issue, what we're, what we're dealing with.
If you cut, let's say your campus that has four custodians, and we cut one, now you're having to do the same load with the three custodians or two custodians. Um, teachers' class sizes will be larger, uh, you know, transportation will be impacted, not as many bus drivers to do the rounds. So, security, I mean, police, we're trying not to touch those because we know the importance of that. But, uh, you know, when you're looking at a list and your face is trying to find the, you know, four million dollars, you've got to really, um, be aggressive with what you're closing, knowing that if we, if needed, we can come back and, you know, if our financial status changes to request, uh, that we reopen those positions and identify funding for them. But if we're going to increase and go to the four million, you know, we're, we're going to have to do some more of that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that there's a fair and balanced, uh, level of information that what, what just occurred earlier right now with, uh, people can blurt out whatever they want, uh, and give you alternative facts, you know, and, and, and think that there's, we have the monies out there to do something. But it's very important for us to respond with the, you know, factual information, the way it is laid out perfectly on the table that says, this is where we're going to cut back in order to get this.
And that's a touch of reality and not living in a, in a, in a different world.
And we still have the challenge of the, the positions that we moved last year into ESR that we need to move back into general fund. So that, you know, that sort of creates a bigger burden for us.
So that means that we have two years to be able to do that. I just want to remind you all, we had, the original, uh, option was three million five hundred and eighty-five thousand. So now it's going from three million five hundred and eighty-five thousand to four million, what is it, Dr. Trevino?
Four million nine, nine hundred thousand.
So four point nine?
No, four million nine hundred.
Oh, okay. So just, just to make you aware, that's like four hundred and some thousand dollars more. And so we have to find it and not only find it, but also sustain it in the year to come.
We got to find that.
Anything else? Okay, next.
Next.
Okay, uh, item number, Mary, twenty-three and twenty-four?
Yes, please.
Okay, item number twenty-three, discussion and possible action regarding consultation with legal counsel on district personnel matters. Possible closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five five one point zero seven four A and five five one point zero seven one two. Uh, on number twenty-four, discussion and possible action to approve the recommendation to hire the following professional positions. Possible closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven four, uh, for the bilingual education director position and capital assets coordinator. And I know that when we go into closed session, uh, I will be asking Dr. Trevino to, um, to talk to us about personnel matters.
Items number twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, are you putting them all together so we can go?
Yeah.
Yes.
Want you to go in executive?
Second.
All the favor?
Sorry.
Again. Good. Flood, real quick.
Seven oh three.
We're back from executive sessions. No action was taken. Dr. Reals?
Item... Item number 24.
23.
Wait, number 23, "Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Consultation with Legal Counsel on District Personnel Matters".
No action.
No action was taken, obviously. Item number 24, "Discussion on Possible Action to Approve the Recommendation to Hire the Following Professional Positions". Trustees, I would like to recommend Dr. Carmen Compa for Bilingual Education.
So moved to approve.
There's the motion, there's the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, for the position of Capital Assets Coordinator, I would like to recommend Mr. Jose Inojosa.
So moved.
There's the motion, there's the second. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Thank you. Congratulations. Veronica?
We have Nixon High School senior Joey Gamas will sign his letter of intent to play baseball at St. Mary's University in San Antonio. Gamas, who's a District 36A Most Valuable Player, will commit to St. Mary's during the ceremony on Monday, June 20th at 9:00 a.m. in the Nixon Library. That's this coming Monday. Also, just a reminder that our administrative offices will close the week of July 4th and offices will reopen on Monday, July 11. And the Board of Trustees is tentatively scheduled for its regular board meeting in July, on Thursday, July 14th at 5:30 p.m. here in the Amberne Urelo. We moved it? No?
We're not having a meeting in July unless it's...
Regular board meeting?
Regular board meeting, yes. We do have a... but it's not, is it July 14th? According to Mr. Perez... sorry. According to Mr. Perez, that we do by policy have to have a regular board meeting. Maybe not the committee meetings, but the regular board meetings.
Okay, no committee meetings.
So July 14th.
Okay.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
I got... where did Bobby go?
Where's Bobby? Roberta, Dr. Roberta Trevino...
Dr. Bobby Roberta Trevino, come out.
Ladies' room.
Ah, let's go in there.
Did she go to the ladies' room or did she leave? Oh. Okay. So Veronica, can you go check, please?
Roberta?
There she is!
Hey, Miss Bobby!
I was waiting for her. I want to thank her very much today. She's no longer going to be part of the LID fam... She'll always be part of the LID family, but today is her last day with the district.
Actually, it's the 30th.
The 30th. Thank you very much for everything you've done for us. I will stand up for you. And I do thank her, and I won't say bye to you because I'm sure I...
I'm gonna call you back and see you around.
She'll be back for our Christmas party and all.
Thank you for your...
But thank you very much for your service to the district. You provided a lot of leadership. And wish you the best, of luck.
Thanks for being with us for 42 years. I love that.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Again? Thank you. Congratulations, your magazine, real nice.